We'll get started. Don, you'll lead us in our invocation. Let's pray.
Father, we thank you for the day. We thank you for this beautiful weather you've given us. Lord, as we come here to do your business, I pray that we'll just have open minds and that we'll do what is right for our city. Just pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Misty, you'll lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll go ahead and convene our meeting. Start with a roll call. Misty Cottle?
Yes, here.
Jeff Upton?
Here.
Jan Throgmorden?
Here.
Marty Lindelberry?
Here.
John Collins?
Here.
Dina McKnight?
Here.
Don Rollins?
Here.
Anthony Foster? Our city attorney and city clerk are both present. The first item on the agenda is the adoption of our agenda. Do we have any questions, concerns, comments, or motions?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the agenda.
Motion in second to adopt the agenda as mailed out. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Next, the approval of our meeting minutes from April 15th. Do we have any changes or amendments or motions concerning those?
I'll make a motion that we accept them as written.
Second.
No motion in second to accept those. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Next is our public forum. Do we have anybody that would like to address the council tonight? Hearing none, we'll move into our business reports. Up first, planning commission, Walter.
Good evening. So, we didn't have a meeting last month, but this month we have a few business items. A rezone, the one we split the front half of the Arvest lot or the lot next to Arvest. They're wanting to rezone to mixed-use neighborhood one, so hopefully maybe some houses or something, which would be preferred. So, then we got, I wasn't quite sure on this one lot split, so we're splitting into seven, so I'm not quite sure how that's working in a lot split. Yeah, so that one slipped by, I guess, or I don't know, let's see what happens there. And the other's just a simple one, split in a half acre into almost a couple quarter acres. And that's about it. I did have a question about some of the state legislature stuff, about zoning, the zoning area, the planning area being gone, is that going?
It is.
Okay. And then also the accessory dwellings.
Don't let me talk about that just yet because there's disagreement right now. What's gonna happen, what that means yet. But I will, I would love to work with you on that.
Okay.
But right now, right there, when it goes into effect in mid-August, the territorial jurisdiction beyond the limits will be gone.
Okay, nevermind.
Any questions for Walter?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have our court report. We don't have a packet this week, this month. Is there any questions on the court report?
Apparently not.
Okay. We got some changes in the court. So, that'll be coming as we move forward. Some more details on that. Library report? Marie?
I didn't see that one.
All right. Hey, so, we're really excited that our summer reading program is about to get launched. It's gonna be on June 7th. We're gonna have a petting zoo among other things, so stay tuned for more exciting stuff. We are almost done getting stuff put up on our website and also Facebook. I gave you the preliminary kind of unchecked summer reading calendar, but as you can tell, we're kind of jam-packed full and right now we're proofing it at the moment to make sure we get the proper information out. So, really excited, lots of fun stuff coming up. Even this month, we have an author who's coming, and her name is Peggy Perry Anderson, and she's gonna do a program called, like, How Does A Book Get Made, or How Does A Story Get Made, a six through 12-year-old. So, if you know any young aspiring authors, send them our way. We're also really excited that Mr. Rosetti is going to do another tool workshop for the first through fourth graders. This year, we're gonna be building a butterfly house. And I believe Ms. Eileen Wilson is going to be providing us with some specimens to give the kids. Really excited about that. I wasn't really sure how to record the story time this month because it kind of had some variation in it with the kindergarten, which was awesome. I don't know if you looked at our Facebook page, but the mayor came and helped the kids put little butterflies up on our wall, so that was a lot of fun. The Ask The Mayor video actually got, like, I think a hundred hits or something in the first couple of days, so that was really cool. We have someone else ask, so we're really excited to be getting a lot of engagement with that. And then we also want to thank Alex, I think, I'm not sure if he's Parks or if he's with Isaac, but he came and helped change a tire for the lady who delivers our books from the other libraries. So, we really appreciate that the deliveries continued the other day. Also, our escape room registration is open if you want to visit Wonderland this year. So, if you go to our website, you can click on the link and book a time with your, for your friends and family.
Just for the record, the mayor still holds the record for the escape room of all of the councilmen. Just throwing that out. Any questions for Marie? Okay.
I wanna say that I went to the cheese class they had, and it was amazing. I had a wonderful time and learned a lot, made some cheese. Thank you. It was really good. They're very informative. The classes she cooks on her work, the times taken.
Absolutely, I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Marie. Sergeant Goggins?
Yes, sir.
Give us the police report.
Good evening. Chief's on vacation, so I'm stuck up here in his stead. We finished the Careers On Wheels thing today, got a little crispy. But it was a fun event. Oh, as far as, sorry, the numbers. We had 377 calls to serve service. That breaks out to 27 reports, 67 citations, a few citations in Greenland, and then 80 warnings. Like I said, Careers On Wheels. Our new guns are in, we are transitioning to, so we'll be training on those in a couple months. Get everybody spun up on those before you have to see those out in the wild. Also, I don't know if you mentioned this before, interoperability. We've, we tested a trial for interoperability as far as communications with the school, fire department, and police. That is operational. We finished the trial, everything, I mean, there's a learning curve with that. So, we're, we're still moving forward with that. We'll have interoperability where the superintendent will be able to communicate on the police and fire channels and vice versa, also the bus channels. So, you have basically, you know, five H4As, you have the police department, fire department, school, and also Greenland. They, they wanna jump on board as well. They just provided a radio as well to fill in a gap we had to have another channel. And once that's all set up and running, you'll have that interoperability right to your phone where if there's a large-scale thing, any of the people in emergency services will have that interoperability to talk to the buses or the buses, we can monitor that, and the superintendent can key up on the, on our standard channel and say, hey, this is going on. So, that's, that's looking really good. Still some growing things with some of that stuff, but that is operational for the most part. We're gonna try to get that, you know, fully 100% in the next month. And, oh, Brad did wanna thank somebody. They're not here, but I still give him opportunity at least to thank that person. I just wanna thank City Councilmember Foster. About three weeks ago, on a Saturday, it was very busy, called, 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 weirdly, for West Fork. And I had someone that was unconscious due to drugs and alcohol, and he was helping him. Well, I had to run off to a domestic that was in progress with physical fighting. So, just wanna say thank you to Councilmember Foster for stopping and helping me. That's about it. So, sorry, Officer Pitts, a little too formal there. But that's basically it. That's about to get heated up and probably see some more calls and some more activity, but that's the way it goes.
Any questions?
I got a question. When the agency assists 58, is that county or is that the K-9?
That'd be everything, all falls into that. So, today, I was sent down for the state slash county to Windlow, and then anytime he's called out for a K-9 thing, that's gonna be categorized as an agency assist.
Yes, I realize that, but like I said, is the county asking y'all that much or, I mean, 58's a lot in a month.
I'd have to go back and actually look at the specifics on that. I'm not sure. I couldn't tell you for sure. I'd have to actually look and see if we can break them down.
I'll start telling you, 'cause Washington County's got a lot more employees than we do. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
58 is a lot for one month.
Yeah, absolutely. It could also be Central EMS. Lots of times when we go and we see a call that comes across active, it's a medical call or a fire call.
So, some of that might be self-initiated?
Absolutely, yes, sir. It does, I would, I can't give you any, like, hard numbers, what is what, but I'd imagine a good portion of it, I know it'll be assist central, it'll be assist state. I mean, there could be an accident on the interstate, and we look and it's a Charlie emergency response entrapment, and we'll typically go, make sure everything's okay, and that would be logged as an assist. So, I'd say a good portion of them, it could be, the majority of them are self-initiated based on, we, you know, get that tone out for Central EMS or the fire department.
That'll work, thank you.
Anything else?
Since you mentioned Careers On Wheels today, I did wanna thank our police and fire department for coming today and making it such a fun event and having the K-9 unit there and doing different demonstrations. Like, they just did a great job interacting with our kids at school and helping them to just see what y'all do and build those relationships with our students. So, thank you all for doing that.
And we have some brave teachers that put on the bikes and took a bike. They did good. They were troopers. One of them, he might have pulled one to the ground. I think she's okay.
Yeah, it's fine.
I told her, be ready. But, yeah, it was a good time.
Anything else for the police department?
Sunscreen.
I didn't have one.
So, I do want to talk for just a minute. So, Officer Pitts has been wearing me out to go on a ride-along, and I put him off for as long as I could. And the reason I did that was I know well enough to know that it wasn't gonna be a typical ride-along. So, I went on one with Sergeant Riley once, and it was hour and a half, two hours. Officer Pitts had me for about four and a half hours, and I don't think he was finished until he looked at his watch and realized his shift was over and it was time for him to go home. So, it was time for me to go home.
We were busy.
We were busy. We actually went on one of those assists. So, you bring it up, a call came across that there was a dispute south of town, and county had two guys that were both 40-plus minutes away. And so, we ran down there, assisted until they could get there. But I say all that to say, Brad brought this up, I've brought it up before. You guys need to schedule a time for a ride-along. It will open your eyes to what's going on in West Fork. Not that it's all bad, but those guys, they see, they see a different side of West Fork than we do a lot of times. So, Officer Pitts has volunteered his services. He promised he wouldn't give y'all four and a half hours, but he has offered his services to give you a ride, give you a little idea of what's going on, what they're dealing with on a day-to-day basis. So, I encourage you to take him up on that. He's not a bad riding partner. He talks a lot, so conversation flows well.
Radar barks just a little bit.
Little bit, but yeah, it's, it's well worth it. You guys should try to schedule that in sometime. Brad, thank you for staying on me to get me in there. Four and a half hours. Next, the public works. Any questions concerning that department? We don't have anything on it either, but we do have some data on our water loss and on our streets and water and sewer department financials.
Sewer's a lot better.
Sewer's looking good, looking better than I thought it would after all that rain in April.
It really is.
Next month, Christie, is our big bond payment, extra $8,000? Yeah, May, so we'll see if we can cover that. That would be...
We're still pretty positive, though.
Yeah, we are, we are. Okay. Next is our parks report.
Little busy month.
Again, we've got some financials on the park.
Apparently, the parks are running busy.
The parks are running busy, yes, yes. Absolutely. And I talked to Chad. Hopefully, we're gonna get another report from, you know, our disc golf course. Last year, they provided us a report with how many, how many people had played that, that had registered through the app to play that, and where all they came from, and that was, that was pretty neat. I think we were fourth or fifth in Northwest Arkansas for, PJ, you probably remember this better than I do, but we were fourth or fifth in total people coming and playing courses in Northwest Arkansas, which is pretty big. So, hopefully, we'll get that soon and we can see some of that. I think last year, we had someone from Alaska that played one of them, yeah. So, that's always neat to see where all people are coming from to West Fork. All right, next, fire report. Chief Howard.
Glad you made it. Glad to be here. Another busy month. We didn't break any records, but up over 100 again. We were at 105 calls for the month of April. 15 of those were fire calls. A lot of rescue and EMS calls, for whatever reason. We've had several more than usual substantial car accidents with entrapment. Guys have been putting a lot of hours in in, in the rescue side of life, so other than that, we logged about 162 hours of training. Travis completed 25 different business inspections for the month of April, along with 15 first visits. We've kinda spread those out. We don't just show up and throw them under the gun. So, he makes a first visit, kinda tells them what's going on, tries to set up on their schedule, when is a good time. So, he had 15 of those, and then three different public safety events in the month of April, like Careers On Wheels were today, so. Our total so far for this year on emergency runs, we're at 427, which is approximately 130 more than we were at through the first four months of last year. I say that because our fuel budget is taking a hit pretty good, but we're, we're being called out a lot more. We've been extremely busy, so other than that, all things are going well.
And their trucks don't get very good fuel mileage. I heard this today in one of your presentations.
You are correct. They do not get the greatest of fuel mileage.
Tell us, Dina, what kind of miles per gallon do they get?
Didn't they say four?
Yeah.
And it can be less than that?
It depends on the truck, but...
Yes, so...
That's why we try not to take that truck to someone who needs an ambulance. We try and take our smaller POBs, but when, when we go to a fire call and we run four different large trucks to a fire call, we're, we're averaging about four miles to the gallon.
A second grader asked that today.
No kidding?
Yeah.
Pretty sure.
I know. But they don't actually do miles per gallon. It's like, is it in?
No, we do miles per gallon.
No, I thought that maybe that was a different truck, but anyway, it was interesting.
We, we log a lot of hours on those trucks. They, they sit in idle for a long time, so we also do, we also do hours in the different, but that's another reason that their miles per gallon are so low is because they sit in idle for such a long time. On a fire scene, we may be there three or four hours with it running. We're not logging any hours, but we're still burning fuel, so, or not logging any miles, but we're still burning fuel.
Anything else for TJ? No? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Next, our finance report. Christie?
I guess TJ left it to Dina to tell you that Mark, I think, timed retirement early well because everything in the fire department has fallen apart since he left. We've replaced the hot water heater. We have replaced some garage doors. This month, we replaced an AC unit, so I'm not, I wouldn't say there's not much more in fall parks, I'm sure there is, but we're hoping that we've gotten the biggest part of it so far this year.
You're saying TJ's been a real blessing to us.
TJ's been a blessing.
Gloss are up, maintenance is up, gloss are up, everything's good.
We'll blame all the budget issues on TJ. So, if you look at the budgets, it still doesn't look very good. We're 123,000 over budget. I did mean to go back and look at the exact number for last month, and I forgot to, but we were in the 200,000 last month, so we, we're looking better this month, and I hope to continue that progress and start seeing that number decrease a little bit. Sales taxes stayed pretty steady at a little over 11%. We already touched on the sewer department, water and sewer. Their finances are looking really good. The, the change in sewer income has definitely made a big difference for that department this year. Couple of things. We have been in talks with Arkansas Department of Transportation about financing. They have told us that it's on the director's desk for final approval, so we should be hearing something soon on that. I just kinda wanna start doing some, moving some utilities and stuff. I think we have until September of next year to get all those moved, so as soon as we have an okay on financing there, then we'll, he can start doing some of that work. He did ask me to let you guys know that Riverwood should have gotten down to One Lane, or One Lane should have opened up today. They were finishing up, and he was hoping to be able to open it, One Lane. And he said within the next two weeks, it should be completed. He was meeting with some contract per concrete people down there today to discuss some of the sidewalks and stuff that they needed to do, and then once they get the concrete poured, then they can get some asphalt down there. So, hopefully, within the next two weeks or so, that would be completely opened up again. And as far as our building, Amanda and I have been working a lot with the new website design company. We've had at least two Zoom meetings a week all month, trying to get stuff ready for that. We're hoping to roll that out the very last day of the month. We should have it and an app available then. So, probably next week or two, we'll start doing a little bit of advertising, trying to get that out there and let people know that that's available. I've got that on a to-do list to get handled, so... Any questions?
No? Okay. So, we do not have any ordinances tonight, so we do not need a procedural motion, item B. Item C, old business. We don't have any old business. So, we can move into item B, new business. And first up is Resolution 2025-5 to utilize federal aid transportation funds for a pedestrian loop ramp and lighting off of Highway 170 into Riverside Park. So, what that is, when the state came and gave us a presentation about the bridge, they also took citizen input about things that we would like to see there. So, two of the things that, that we, that they, they get a lot of comments on were a path to get from that pedestrian trail on the, on the bridge, 'cause it's on the north side of the bridge, so a path, pathway to get into Riverside Park. The other big item was lighting along the bridge. And so, after the state had looked at all of that, they came back to us and said, hey, that stuff's great, but that's on the city to pay for. However, a tap grant would, would serve the purpose of putting in that pathway and those lights. So, what we've pretty well decided on, I think we're, we're 100% there, is once you come across the bridge coming west from Carter Park on the pathway that's on the north side of the bridge, you would circle down underneath the bridge and come into Riverside Park. The other option for that was to put a crosswalk there, but it's right on that curve. Different things, the state didn't really want us doing it that way. They said they've seen issues when, when done that way. So, what we're talking about is a pathway that wraps underneath the bridge and goes into Riverside. You follow me, Dina? Okay. And then also the lights along the bridge to light it up. But that's, that's what this resolution is, is we have, we have applied for that tap grant because the, the window was closing. So, I need council approval that we would, yes, use that tap grant on the bridge where we could get it.
So, how, there's a lot of flooding or high water that comes underneath that bridge sometimes. So, if the water's flowing really high and fast and it damages it, then are we on, we have to pay to repair that?
Yeah. So, I think it would be kinda the same situation we have now with the sidewalks down there. You know, they get flooded occasionally, and we have to go clear them up. As far as actual damage, we haven't had any. And I don't know, Dina, the extent to which they're gonna, to raise and move those bridge decks. So, that flooding may not be as big of an issue there. I don't, I don't know that. I'm just throwing that out. Yes, we would be responsible after the fact for maintaining.
How long, how long can we sit on the money? It ain't, it don't have to be spent by a certain time, does it?
No, I don't believe so. I think as long as we, as long as we say we're gonna utilize it on that project, we're good to go with it.
Got you. I'll make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion in second to approve Resolution 2025-5. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Item two is Mr. Brent. Brent, Brent Ratcliffe with CMI acquisitions regarding cell phone towers. And Brent called. We had a meeting last month. We had a lot of, we don't have as many here tonight, unfortunately, but we had a lot of citizens last month when we discussed the tower contract. But Brent reached out and said, hey, I'd like to come and just talk, answer questions. So, we have him tonight, sir. The floor is yours.
Good afternoon. My name is Brent Ratcliffe, working for Verizon Wireless. Verizon has got, you know, some coverage issues here in downtown West Fork, and just got a couple of things I'm gonna show you. I've got a pamphlet here, a picture of what the tower would look like. So, I'm just gonna pass those out and hopefully answer any questions that y'all might have.
Were we able to get that picture? Is it the same picture you texted me, Brent?
I think so. I had two pictures. I think I seen one.
You sent me one, but I'm not sure.
Hope I got enough for everybody. Running out.
Go ahead and skip over there.
Okay. No. I ran out.
Sure, sure.
One of the concerns that the citizens talked about was the idea that Verizon could sell the tower, and then what happens?
So, the tower would still be under the same agreement that the city signs with Verizon. And, and more than likely, that will happen. They partnered with another company that they're doing this nationwide with. It's kind of a sister company. So, that, that will happen, but they will have to honor the same agreement that the city signs with Verizon.
Okay, so there wouldn't be any, just, you know, it's sold and now whatever, we have to remember.
I mean, basically, your, your rent payments would come from, you know,
A different company.
vertical bridge towers instead of Verizon. Same, same, same thing.
And I, and I think in that contract, it, it spells that out and says that if the city sells the property, the same thing applies. The new owner complies with that contract.
Correct.
Yeah.
That was just one of the things that you kept talking about last month, so...
Yes, ma'am. But just to kinda go over the information I passed out, if you look on the, the third page of the first pamphlet I passed out, there's, you can see the, the coverage here in West Fork. You can tell that right there, there's, the green spots are excellent coverage. The yellow spots is spotty coverage, and that's, that's the objective they're trying to do, is to cover that, that hole in the, in the coverage for Verizon. You know, there's, there's safety, safety issues with that. If somebody, you know, has an emergency and one of the towers to the north or the south of West Fork goes out, you know, you might not have cell phone coverage. So, there is a safety issue involved.
So, Brent, one of the questions last month... So Brent, one of the questions last month was um uh, not that we have any tower experts uh in West Fork, but, but why in the world would you wanna put a tower in a valley?
Well, obviously, there's, there's, the elevation's not as high. Um, and we, we can't go, you know, up on top of a hill because the antennas would have to be pointing straight down into West Fork. So we need to get closer to the whole of the valley to provide coverage uh for downtown West Fork. So that's, that's the reason why we need to be, you know, down here in West Fork to, to provide cell phone coverage.
I sure wish you was here last month.
Have you looked at any other areas that wouldn't give this same coverage that like wasn't so close to the school or wasn't right in the middle of downtown? You know what I mean? Cause those are some of the concerns that people have, is the location.
We, we did look to the north, um going back towards, is that Washington County? So we, we looked up that way and the coverage objective was, was not as well. Um, we would not be able to cover downtown West Fork unless we do have a location within the city limits. And I, I've been working with Isaac. We looked at several other different locations, and this is the location that we kinda came up with after several um site visits. This was the location that we came up with that would work well for possibly the city and for Verizon. So this is the location we chose.
But even if you weren't to partner with the city, if it was somebody else's property, is there anywhere else that wouldn't be so close to the school and right in the middle of downtown?
We looked at that and this was, you know, a little bit further out of town. It wasn't on the main strip, um crossing the river or right here in the main area. Um, I, I went and looked at the site earlier before I came here, and there's, there's coverage, there's true coverage all the, all the way around that uh location. So you really only see the top half of this tower, um, the top half of the model. You wouldn't see from, from the railroad tracks, you wouldn't see the half of the tower roughly. Now, when you go up to the tower and you look to your left, you would see it in that back left corner. But anywhere from downtown, you wouldn't see it, the half of it.
Their concern was safety for the children because of the weight.
Sure. So let me just, um, let me just pass this out real quick. Um, as far as exposure is concerned, um.
That was the concern that the citizens were facing.
Yeah, and if you look at so these are uh radio frequency waves that. If you look at that, the output of the cell phone tower is significantly less than um everything else on that list. Uh, if you look at it, I think it's called a macro site is what it's called. I mean, it's, it's a lot less than a baby monitor. Uh, it's a lot less than uh your cell phone. Your cell phone's gonna do more damage to you than this cell tower will. Um, and the, we've got several studies that show that, you know, these cell towers do not cause any kind of cancer. Uh, but what the World, the World Health Organization just did a study on, you know, cell towers. And there's no evidence, there's no link between cell towers and cancer whatsoever. So um, I've got that too.
Some of the things I read, again, I am not an expert on this hell. And you Google and you can find whatever you want to, just support whatever side. But it wasn't just cancer, it was talking about maybe some neurological damage that could be caused by those frequencies?
Um, and these, these antennas are, they're all over the place. I mean, they're on top of hospitals. Um, they're on top of roof, any kind of rooftop in downtown Fayetteville, Little Rock. I mean, they're, they're everywhere. So, you know, unless you go up there on top of the, the tower and get funding these antennas directly, you're not gonna have any exposure or, or any kind of other damage. Um, but you know, like there, if you look at that picture, uh, the one I passed out, you can see there's, there's houses behind the tower. There's a um Honda dealership beside it. Um, so there's, there's all kinds of, you know, nitty-gritty development around these towers all over the place.
When Brent called me the other day to ask if he could come uh to the meeting, I told him I just, I just came back from Conway. We've played softball at Conway City of Colleges for ten years. There's actually one of these towers just like this setting out uh in the outfield. I'd never even noticed it before until it kinda got on my radar because we were talking about it here, but.
And just, just also to mention, uh, if the, the fire department or the police department needs to put an antenna on the tower, Verizon would also allow that, um, if y'all, if y'all need a, a live antenna for the emergency system.
Would there be a cost in that?
No.
Would there be a cost in that or would they just allow that?
Just allow it, yes ma'am.
Just checking. It's our job, no. I took it that that meant that, but I didn't wanna, sir.
Any other questions for Brent?
Question back here. Are you, I understand the same, those same lines. Is it something they could partner with, like the A-Wing network? Where they could actually put a small antenna on that side? Are you talking about specifically just if we have our own network or is it across the board or?
Yeah, I mean, they definitely put, you know, whatever, they typically want a, a live antenna, um, that's, that's how tall. Um, you know, it's five or sixteen tall, cause these antennas are typically six to eight feet tall. So if the antennas are around sixteen, they probably be okay with that.
Cause I, that's the reason I, sorry to interrupt, is we have, our reception here on our statewide network is just right at the borderline of, there's lots of little spots. You go into houses or one or two steps in and you lose service. So they're already looking at upgrading the West Fork Towers and other stuff, but that would potentially, that's why I wanted to just.
Can you answer a question there?
Go ahead.
As far as it's gotta be a hundred and fifty foot tall, you, they're all over Fayetteville, but they're seven, ten foot tall. This one's a hundred and fifty feet. You put it down in the valley, but you gotta make it a hundred and fifty feet. What if you put it up higher than, it wouldn't have to be a hundred and fifty foot. My point is, you're not making much logical sense by saying, we're gonna need it down in the valley for this so we can get reception to the certain area, which is a hundred and fifty foot tall. So that's just a, the study.
Well, let him answer, let him answer.
So most of these cell towers are, are two hundred and fifty feet tall. Um, this one is, is, I think it's actually a hundred and eighty feet tall. Um, but this, this tower is actually shorter than the normal cell tower, you know, across, across the board. Um, but so it's, as far as, as far as the footprint goes, it's a smaller footprint, it's a smaller tower. Um, it's the best looking tower. You've known the guy at wires. Um, it's, it's a smaller footprint.
My, my name is excellent. I build a hundred and fifty foot wall, that's okay then. Would the body, if it blocked it or? I mean, I can do that.
Yeah.
Well, isn't the top of it the important part anyway? I mean, and the height is to keep it so that it is open? Am I correct? I mean, everything bounces off of that, right?
Correct, correct. Not the bottom, it's just the top.
Gotcha.
Just saying that.
Yeah.
Say sixty yards is, don't sound as bad.
Actually, I wonder if Andrew just said that there's more than two fifteen, is it that?
Let, let's keep it up here from the high man. He's answered your question. Yes, ma'am.
Hi.
Hi.
Um, I'm just curious, I mean, last month, like John said, John, don't wanna be upset. It would've been great for you to be here last month, but I feel like, I'm just curious what the point of this is respectfully? Like, they've already heard everything and it was voted on, so it just feels a little like.
I'll answer that one.
Okay, yeah, I'd love to.
So I think, I, I made this point on Ask the Mayor. Did you not watch that, Grace?
I'm sorry, I work during the day.
It's, you can get it twenty-four, seven. So I made the comment that people get upset with us because we hear all types, all sides, right? The, the city council, if somebody wants to come talk to us, we're gonna allow it. And so that's, when Brent saw that we, we did not approve that, he reached out and said, hey, is, is there a chance I can come and talk and answer some questions? And so that's what he's here for.
Fair, yes. I guess maybe more my question is, what happens from here? Does it get magically reopened?
It could.
Is that, it can? Okay, that's, yeah, just like what is?
No, there's, there's nothing that, that has to happen from this. He asked if he could come and address the city and the council, and I said absolutely, yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's what, yeah, just curious. But then also, I was just gonna ask too. Um, I know you passed them out, a coverage map.
Yeah.
As a Verizon customer that lives about a thousand feet from where this'll go, I've had zero coverage issues ever living here. So I'm just curious how that gets gauged? What is, like, are there people complaining that, oh?
No, I'm arguing.
I wish I had.
Some city employees can't get it when they're out in the field and they need it.
And they, they have Verizon?
They have Verizon, they don't have the coverage.
Well, and I, I do live a mile from here.
Yeah.
And I have Verizon, and I don't have very good coverage a mile south.
So it, it is kinda spotty, like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's, there's spots in that coverage that, you know, that you might not get coverage inside your house.
So a lot of this has to do with in-building coverage too, not just general coverage outside of, you know, the streets. So right now, that's kinda what the map looks like.
Gotcha.
Homes to the south, there's one to the north.
And where's the tower? Oh, right there, okay.
So we have one tower to the north and one tower to the south.
Gotcha.
This is basically, once a tower's built, you would have excellent coverage, you know, basically north and south of here. Um, there's gonna be a few holes, but not many.
Okay.
So that's, that's the purpose, you know, is to fill in this, this COVID gap.
Gotcha.
For Verizon, yeah.
Gotcha. Thanks.
Council, you have any other questions for Brent?
It has to be totally renegotiated, correct? Because it was not approved last time, so it would have to go back to the table for renegotiation.
What, what I would like to do, and I hate to do it, because I would love to invite you back next month. You're gonna get beat up, I can promise you.
Yeah.
People aren't nice, you know, when they're totally against something. But there was a lot of people here last month. Can you come back next month and let's invite them back? Maybe you can answer their questions before we negotiate anything. Because we voted against this, against it. Should not be on new business, cause it ain't new business, this is old business. But we've already said no, but I would love to invite you back and let you answer questions when we have a full house like we did last, last month.
Was there, was there any other questions that, that y'all can remember that I could try and answer?
Well, no, 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 I'm talking, answer them.
Yeah, I, I can.
You know, because, just because we ask them and you answer us, nobody that come, watch these meetings, they see it on Facebook, they wanna come, nobody comes here to say, hey, good job, let's do this. It's everybody when they find something to complain about, that's when they show up. You know, I, I would like to invite you back, hopefully you can answer their questions, get more people on board. Like I said, I don't have good coverage. I gotta use my internet at my house.
Yeah.
To get phone calls.
And that would, you know, the tower's built, they have to deal with that problem.
Yeah.
Anyone else on the council have a question?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
So uh, you put a tower in and, and Verizon services that. Uh, will the, any of the other carriers wanna put a, something on your tower?
They, they can, yes, sir, they can.
Well.
So then typically, it could improve anybody's cell service that's on whatever company.
Yes, sir. They can.
So you.
Could be a benefit to everybody, not just Verizon customers.
Absolutely. So typically, you know, Verizon and AT&amp;T, they're opposite competition. I mean, typically when, you know, Verizon builds a site, AT&amp;T shows up, you know, right down the road or a year later. Um, so yes, it, it would benefit every carrier.
What were your other questions, John?
So you lease space out on your tower?
Yes, I did. Verizon, you know, that's not their.
Goal?
That's not their goal, that's not their, that's not their business. Um, but it can be. I mean, their, their business is provide, you know, excellent coverage to their customers. Um, you know, they're, they're not building the tower, you know, for, for AT&amp;T to get on there. So, I mean.
Well, then how, how come they build towers and then sell them? You just said it'll probably be sold if, or so they're in the business of building towers and selling?
They, they, they can, yes, sir. I mean, if the money's right, obviously, but not.
Yeah, but then they sell the tower.
So, but I, I think something that needs to be specified there with that question, John, is you don't work for Verizon.
We're contracted.
So Verizon's getting somebody to build a tower.
Yeah.
Right? And so is it, is Verizon actually gonna own the tower? Or is it gonna be a third party that owns the tower and leases space to Verizon?
So the contract right now is with Verizon. They will more than likely assign this tower to uh Vertical Bridge, which is the tower that, which is the tower company.
Yeah.
Um, this just happened in the last six to eight months that they're doing this nationwide. Uh, where they're getting other, because obviously, cost of construction has gone up a lot. Um, and Verizon's putting the burden of the cost of construction on somebody else, basically. And so, yes, they will pro, more than likely assign this to Vertical Bridge, another tower company. And then that is their, that, then when that becomes, when that happens, that is their, you know, their business is to lease out space.
Yeah.
Anybody yet?
So basically, they would be making money off of us, correct? I mean, they're gonna be making more than they're paying us.
I would hope so.
Oh, there's.
I mean, that's obvious.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, ma'am. Well, I mean, that we pay.
I just wanted to hear it, cause even though.
You pay your phone bill?
Do I pay for mine?
Yeah, your phone bill, they make money. It's Verizon.
Yeah, they, they, they'll lease it out. I mean, if they have the chance to lease it out to AT&amp;T or, you know, T-Mobile or whoever, they will. And, you know.
And could double their, what they're, what they're paying us? Basically, they could make their coverage and then even maybe extra, right?
Yes.
Sure.
Of course.
Like, they could rent it to someone else for, say, fifteen thousand a year or something.
I mean, yeah.
If they want to, yeah.
But that's, that, that doesn't matter.
No.
No. I mean, that's what business is about, making money.
Doesn't matter that somebody else makes money off of it, cause that's what.
So long as we have our contract in place, they're only gonna make so much with us, that's for sure. Or they're only gonna pay us so much.
So, you know, they're, they're paying all the ground, the ground, you know, for this, for this tower. Um, and there's, you know, there's, there's so much money they would make off Verizon. Um, and then they, there's so much they'd make off the next tenant. Um, I don't know those numbers, but.
So can I ask the council something, just like as a conversation point? So like, one of the things Grace brought up last month, I think Grace, so if I, if I'm misquoting you, correct me. But she had brought up that they had just done a lot of work on our, like, um zoning and or all those ordinances to try to make sure our city looks a certain way and we're growing a certain way and, and all of those things. And that was, I thought, a very valid point. So what does the council think about that? Like, how do y'all see a tower potentially being placed right here in town? How do you see that complementing or marrying with what we're trying to make our city look like? Am I explaining my question?
Well, it's gonna make a difference to the people that live in it. I mean, you know, we've gotta find every option that we can to get people in West Fork. And, you know, if you tell them they got spotty cell coverage, they're probably gonna say, well, that's all we use at home. So, you know, that may, may be something that changed their mind.
I see it as growth.
It is growth.
And life.
Yeah, absolutely.
I was looking at it.
Hang on, hang on, let's, let's let the council finish it.
Uh, uh, you know, it's called growth.
Exactly.
You need to go with it or you die.
Yeah, that's right.
So like, in terms of, I'm not arguing, I'm just asking. I like to hear everybody's perspective. So in terms of like, the appearance of the downtown with a tall yards or feet, however you wanna say it, with a tall tower, how do y'all see that in terms of the aesthetics of our town with a tower like that?
How many do you notice when you drive through Fayetteville?
And that's a good point. No.
You ever seen the one in the middle of Greenland?
It's just part of it.
It's the best one I can come up with. It's the best one I can come up with. You ever seen the one in the middle of Greenland?
Somebody pointed that out about the ball field.
Do you know it's there? Have you ever seen it? It's like that.
There's more in Wilmington.
Yep.
The only one, the only one I really noticed is the one in Fayetteville that they try to make.
I know.
That sticks out the end for sure.
Yes.
All right.
Uh, in our schedule of uses, it's down as a conditional use permit, so if this were to go through, we'd have to apply for that. We'd have all this discourse again at that hearing.
Okay. Thank you, Walter. Good to know.
It's on city property, so we don't need the conditional.
I'll do that.
Okay.
Sorry.
Anything else for you guys?
So have you looked at options to, one of the questions was, um, you know, it, we got all the, hoopla over it, because it was city property, but have you looked at, do you ever do this on like, private citizens?
We do, we do. Um, and we, we looked at, Isaac and I looked at several different, um, options as far as individual landowners go, and, you know, the places we looked were like, basically right there by the river. And we didn't, Isaac really didn't want it by the river, you know, that, the main street coming into town. Um, so this is kinda why we pushed it a little bit further out, outside of the, the city limits, or the, or downtown area. And there's, there's no, I mean, some of these towers over two hundred feet tall, they have lights on them. This, obviously this one, I have a light on it. So, that was, I'm not sure if that was another concern.
That was, that was something that came up.
It, it won't have a light at all?
No, sir. It won't. So under, under FAA, uh, regulations, any tower under two hundred feet is not required to have a, a light on top of it.
Well, then that's not distracting, so.
Yeah. As far as seeing it goes, I mean, somebody described to me one time, you, you build these towers, they, it's like a power line. You know, they get put up and then you don't even see them once they're built. It kinda, it kinda.
You get used to it.
You get used to it.
You do.
Everybody, everybody has a cell, cellphone, but when, when people hear cell towers, they, they think of three hundred foot towers with guide wires and, a massive footprint. Well, that's not the case here. It's a small footprint, single pole, no guide wires. Um, as far as the statistics go, it's the best looking tower that you can build, um, minus a guide tower, minus a cell support tower.
Any other questions from the council? I know I got a couple more questions that's come in.
I do have one. If the, if you did it with an individual, so what rules apply then? If, if I, if I put it on my property, what would be the rules that I would have to go by?
Well, we would have to bring it before the, the council and get approval.
Okay. So it's still gotta be, it's still gotta be.
Your, your law's not big enough.
Right, well, I know that.
Are you moving your house?
I just wonder if someone did, whatever he liked.
Yeah.
So it'd be very hard.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Diane Ral, and I know y'all talked about this last week, but how would it benefit Westwood when it come to, uh, the money situation? How would it help us when we get a substantial amount? I mean, is it worth putting it up?
Yeah, so good question. Um, how many, how, how big is that space? Do you remember?
It's an eighty foot by eighty foot lease area.
So eighty foot, eighty foot area that, and all were, the city would be leasing ground to them. Uh, and I think the current contract was at nine thousand a year.
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah.
And if you lease other, uh, like, AT&amp;T comes in and you put a lease, then we get extra for you?
No, currently it's not structured like that.
But it could be. Depends on our contract.
They used to do it.
Yeah.
Um, typically, they don't do it anymore.
Yeah.
So that would be an advantage for Westwood then, to have that income coming in?
It was nine thousand a year.
It wouldn't hurt us.
Uh, so would it be a benefit? Yeah, I mean, anybody can use an extra nine thousand dollars. Is it going to change our budget significantly? No. Uh, that's less than one percent of the annual budget. So, is it a make or break? A hundred percent no. Uh, when we initially talked about this, uh, we were at a point where, we were talking about, uh, dedicating, uh, this rental income to buying, um, water meters, doing water meter replacements. So the water meters in the city are, uh, they're all electronic or digital now. Uh, cellphone, right, that's how they read, is from a cellphone. And so we were initially looking at, uh, taking this money and attaching it to meter purchases for a time period. Uh, that's been, like we said, that was back near COVID, that's been about four or five years ago. So, are we still looking at that? No. Uh, not necessarily. But, but yeah, the city would take it and utilize it in, in some fashion. Um, but is it make or break? No.
Pay for Sergeant Howerton's fuel.
Could be, yeah. Pay fire fuel. Yes, sir.
There are, there are some reasons in the, or in the lease. It does though, well?
It goes up some.
Okay, it does.
Term of finances, would it add to the total evaluation of property that goes to the mills?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, it's gonna be another asset.
Right.
Uh, that gets, gets valued at current, current time, right, instead of, yes.
Okay.
Do you have another question?
Really just stated, if it was in your backyard, you would like it. It is my backyard.
So what I can tell you, I, I understand what you're saying, but I can tell you that I had one in my front yard that was a thousand and thirty feet tall. I welcomed them to come and put it there. I built a house there afterwards. Never caused me any trouble, and I had a smile on my face every month.
Okay, but you were getting paid for that.
That's what he said.
He's not. That's the difference.
That's, that's the difference. You're exactly right. And I had neighbors that weren't happy with me.
Yeah. I mean, if he was getting paid, it must be different.
Could be, could be. But, point is, I've had one in my front yard, much taller than this. They, they leased ten acres. Uh, had guy wires on it, the whole bit, right?
Yeah.
Anyway, that's, that's my personal experience. It did not bother me.
That just happens to be my great backyard.
I, and I get that, I get that.
And I like the trees. That I see now.
Bonnie, you've been quiet.
I like looking at the sky, and I don't wanna see an ugly, you know, I'll see it right out in my back.
What about the one up on the hill? Do you see it when you look at the western sky?
I don't think I can see that one from my yard, but I will be able to see this one. And, I think it's ugly. I think it's not gonna be an asset. I, I think it's gonna be a liability. I think that there's, I mean, I don't see it as an asset appearance wise.
Okay, fair enough.
I would like to have it situated someplace less.
Not in your backyard.
Not, well.
I'm pinning at you.
Somebody pointed out, Westwood is small enough that, you know, almost any place you put it is gonna be in my backyard. I mean,
It's gonna be seen.
Westwood is a small town, and we're all, you know, anything big, tall like that, can be seen. But I think that there are places that would be better to put it than that.
Isaac and I looked at other locations to the north, and once they, once the art engineers did their analysis, it's gonna miss several, uh, spots that are covered to the south. Um, so it's gonna miss the coverage objective if we move it further to the north. So that's the reason why we.
I guess another question I have for you is, you know, if some companies, not Verizon, but some companies are able to give us excellent coverage, here in Westwood without having a tall tower right, you know, there, why isn't Verizon able to do that? Why, why is it different for Verizon than it is for AT&amp;T or some of the others?
And AT&amp;T might have the same coverage problem as this Verizon, they just had to address it then.
I can say, I have lived on the south end of town for thirty-five years, and I've never had good coverage with AT&amp;T, Verizon, or T-Mobile. Sometimes it's good, sometimes it's not.
I'm sure we're good coverage right now from AT&amp;T sitting right here.
Well, I have excellent coverage, and I'll probably have the cheapest, uh, service plan, so, uh, I don't use any of those that y'all have mentioned.
Well, you do.
Yeah, I'm like, okay. Well, the other day when AT&amp;T and the bank and everybody was down, the school was down, the bank was down, everybody was on AT&amp;T. They didn't have any internet, and I had perfect internet.
Somebody made a, made a comment on Facebook about it. I've had fifteen people screenshot that to me. Isn't it a coincidence? We've got a guy coming to talk about towers and the city's out of, out of cell service.
But I had cell service, and I was sitting right down at the park, so. I think it's maybe the.
Do, do we have any other questions from the council for Brent?
Well, I can, I can come back next month if, if that's, you know.
So I, I think the council still needs to decide, is this something that we even wanna pursue, right? Uh, as we've pointed out, we, we, we voted not to approve it, uh, the, the contract, so we need to decide, is this something we want to take back up? And then, if so, I'll reach back out to you and definitely get you, if we're gonna talk about it again, uh, definitely give you an opportunity to come and.
Okay.
Discuss and.
Sure.
Yeah. Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. So is that something the council wants to take up tonight, uh, with a small group, or is that something that, uh, council wants to say yes or no? Do we wanna wait on that? Do we wanna think about it?
I think we should revisit it. Because I think it's necessary, but I thought that last month, so I was.
I did too. I thought it was a mistake to get rid of it completely last month.
It was. But it can be renegotiated if they're not happy with the contract.
If who ain't happy with it?
Whoever's not happy with it.
The public was not happy with the contract at all, no matter what.
They're not gonna be happy. There's, that was fifty people, maybe forty people, that were not happy. How many people live in Westwood?
That, that's what I'm saying.
The people who are happy don't come down here and go, oh, we're so happy you're doing this. They just leave it alone.
Make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we revisit it.
I'll say it.
We have a motion and second on the table to revisit the cellphone contract with CMI.
So before you lock yourself into a date, you might wanna have the council charge the mayor with, you know, whatever groundwork is necessary as far as if there's gonna be a renegotiation, is there's gonna be, you know, crack the contract open, look at it. The mayor might say, this is the appropriate month. If you, if you set it for next month, you might not be ready with everything you might wanna do.
So what if we, what if we amend this motion?
I'm okay with that.
To have another council discussion on this to see what we like, what we don't like, and how we wanna move forward.
Okay. That's.
Still second.
We good with that?
Yep.
The amended motion to have a council discussion next month of how, when, why, where, whatever, to move forward with this. We have a motion and second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no?
No.
That motion carries. Okay. Uh, item three of new business, uh, has been, uh, removed. Uh, the person that, uh, that got on the council for this couldn't make it tonight, so that, that may come up at another time. Uh, item E, other business. Do we have any other, other business tonight? No? Okay. Item F, mayor's comments. Brad, I wasted my mayor's comments talking earlier. That's, that's what I was gonna discuss, the mayor's comments. It's how great of a chauffeur you were. I don't have a lot of comments this month. A lot of stuff going on. Um, so.
Make a motion with John.
There we go.
Second.
Motion and second to adjourn John Collins.
I still have something to say.
All those in favor.
Yes.
John's still sitting there trying to figure what happened.
All those opposed, no. We are adjourned.